First I'll start by calling the Monday, April 6, 2020 Planning Commission to Order, held here via remote video conferencing. Thank you all for taking some time to accommodate the requests so we can keep a couple of these items on track based upon the applicant's timelines and accommodating those. We'll go through the role. All the persons who are flu. Are you with us? All the persons who are flu. All the person, or sorry, Shane Burkhart.
I'm here.
Great.
How's my audio level?
Great, can hear you. Nice background. I like the Burkhart backgrounds on Zoom. Lee Tao.
Here.
Thank you. Dan Hanson.
Here.
Great. And Tom Brey.
Here.
So we've got a quorum. And thank you, and looks like we've got some other folks that are, the applicants on the agenda that are also joining us. Item number one on the agenda, which is approval of the report from the November 18, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. What's your wish regarding that item?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve by Wesley, is there a second?
Second.
By Bry, any discussion or corrections to the minutes? None, move into vote, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item two, Bullseye Golf Club Extraterritorial CSM, request for certified survey map approval for the creation of three outlots and one outlot within the town of Grand Rapids. Subject property is located at 2800 Ridgewood Trail, parcel ID 0701048. And I think we're a screen share here so folks are able to see it. Sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you. I do want to note, Mayor, that earlier Sue did say she was going to abstain with potential conflict of interest in this item.
Okay.
At five, so again, we could still pass this, still forward. Basically, we have extraterritorial CSM, and it is for a three lot, see, a three lot with one outlot, very small kind of subdivision. It's off a Ridge Road, it's very comparable to the lots that are already out there, and Ridgewood Trail, I'm sorry. You can see the location on the map, it's abutting the parking lot for the golf course. And when staff have reviewed this, I will note that we, you know, we don't technically have a, an extraterritorial land use map that identifies our extraterritorial uses. However, given the uses surrounding the requested area, given the limitations that exist with regards to the airport to the south, as well as the golf course, and given the size of the lots which range between a half acre to 1.5 acres, we would recommend approval of the survey.
Commissioners, any discussion, or staff, I guess, Joe, is there anything further as it relates to the extraterritorial review street or any?
There are some questions from the realtor about services and things like that, so we related that information, but nothing, nothing concerning the survey.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any discussion or otherwise entertain a motion on this item?
Hang on a second, I've got to stop screen sharing here for a second, unmute.
Top center of the screen, is that green?
Oh, yes.
So if, if people are familiar with Zoom, if they, if they click down in the lower left-hand corner, they can start the video, that way they can be seen?
Yeah, folks that are, if they do have the ability for webcam or streaming capabilities, you can do that in the lower left corner. There we go. There's also a gallery view too, if you wish to be, wish to be seen. Commissioners, what are your wishes regarding this item?
I would motion to approve, I don't really have much concern with what's happening here. I would second the motion as well.
And second by Bry. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item three, and one abstention, sorry, an abstention, for the record, I think Sue, she was abstaining. Sue, is that an abstention?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So motion carried, would that be two, four ayes and one abstention? Item three, Plan 200121, Ark Central Incorporated, representing the business owner, request for a site plan review to construct a cafe building with drive-through at 3828th Street South. I guess I'll go to staff first to walk us through the vicinity and what's being proposed here.
So again, this is on 8th Street South, on a vacant property, it's Zone B2, it's, it's proposed for a cafe or restaurant type use with a drive-through. There's about 20 onsite parking stalls. The, the use requires an architectural review, site plan review, plan of operation, as well as a zoning permit, and again, it is Zone B2. You'll see the site plan on the screen, they're looking to utilize the existing ingress egress to the property, vehicles will funnel to the west to access the drive-through, or they can go north to park or south to park in front of the building. Here's the landscaping plan, which we'll talk about further shortly. Landscaping shown on the north side and the east side of the parking lot along the street. There's a rendering of the structure, it's unique in that it's going to be constructed out of storage containers, and windows and other features will be added, other architectural elements, which the applicant can certainly speak to as well if they're on the call. Other elevations here, again, the, the most architectural are those facing the road. So when staff did the review, most of the dimensional standards are, all the dimensional standards are met in terms of lot size setbacks. One thing I do want to note is, given the state highway, that they may want to double-check with the county or the DOT for the ingress egress, if they do expand it at all, or relocate it on-site. Further, the development does meet the parking ratio with 20 stalls on-site. I will know that 17 are technically in front of the building, and there is a requirement within the zoning code that states that only 50% of the parking stalls can be in the front of the building, so that would be from the front corner of the building forward towards the street, and they are beyond that threshold. However, I'm sorry, it's 30%, but I believe Plant Commission can approve up to 50%, and I will be making that recommendation shortly. Additionally, you know, when, when staff have done the review, there are a few things needed on the landscaping plan. Species has not been identified, furthermore, there's an additional one to two trees that would be required along the street, they aren't wrapping, or at least aren't showing on the landscaping plan to have landscaping around the entire extent of the building, and that is a requirement as well. And then there are some more details with regards to the paved area, which would dictate how many points would be needed to ensure that those point ratios are met from a landscaping standpoint. Again, because of these, these missing things, you'll see shortly that I will be adding a condition that an updated landscaping plan be submitted. In terms of the architecture, you know, I think they do a well job, a good job of adding in windows, I think the garage door is an interesting touch on the front of the building, as well as some fiber cement that they're looking to wrap as around the fascia. And then the last thing is that they have not yet submitted a landscaping plan, or lighting plan, excuse me. With that being said, we recommend approval with the conditions outlined on the screen and within the staff report, I won't go through them all, the biggest one is, again, submitting an updated landscaping plan, meeting all the requirements within the zoning code.
Great, just trying to get my packet to load here, sorry about that. So the recommendation, as Kyle just walked us through, is to approve subject to a set of conditions. I guess I'll go to commissioners first, and then I'll go to the applicant, is the applicant on the line? I can't quite tell. Is Jim on the, Jim, are you on the line? Got a few folks that are not identifiable. Okay. We'll go to commissioners first, and then if Jim, if you are on the line, then I'll go to you next to speak about, or if you want to speak to the requests. Commissioners, any, any discussion?
I think it's a fairly interesting concept for a building. Like to see how they can pull it up, but in general, I think it's a pretty good plan. Making.
It's exciting, kind of structure in our town, so I think that's really cool.
Jim, was that you on the line? Was that Kyle at the bottom left?
Yeah, 0586.
Otherwise, commissioners, any other comments? Any concerns with the proposed conditions or recommendations for approval that Kyle outlined? I'll have Kyle read them one more time if, if Jim's not on the line here.
So the, the parking in front of the, of the building, the principal building, which would actually be the east, it's incorrectly stated on these slides in the packet, the east side of the principal building shall not exceed 50% on the total site. A complete landscaping plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. A lighting plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. Details on any refuse enclosure shall be provided for review and approval by the Community Development Department. All applicable permits through the City of Wisconsin Rapids and other jurisdictions, such as the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, shall be obtained. Necessary plans for erosion control and stormwater requirements per the City of Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code shall be submitted and approved by the Public Works Department and/or any other jurisdiction locally. And community development staff shall have the, the authority to approve minor modifications to the plan, and this would include, you know, small architectural changes, or small, small changes to, again, the landscaping plans and the site plan.
So just, just looking at the aerial photo, right next door is Subway. Looks like Subway's got about 10 to 12 parking spots all in the front of the building.
Sorry?
I knew it was Subway.
Subway would have been under the previous code. Yeah, Subway's probably been eight years, I'm guessing, eight, 10 years.
So I think the mayor was clarifying that the new code adopted in 2018 likely had, has the requirement with regards to 50% in the front of the building?
Yeah, and as we were going through and redoing, rewriting that code, we discussed, you know, what to do with 8th Street and, you know, taking it parcel by parcel to, to kind of bring it to a more modern, appealing code.
Right, personally, I also agree with the requirement, I think, too often in the, you know, since 70s, you've seen auto-oriented types of the development that have pushed the, the parking in the front of the buildings, and from an aesthetic standpoint, it doesn't look as nice, you know, it, they're not easily walkable. Again, I would be in favor of enforcing, obviously, that requirement, but also I think it does make sense, because of the drive-through in this instance, to get vehicles off the right of way, to pull them through the site, to get the stacking and so forth, you know, it does make sense, I think, to go to that 50% level for this development.
Great, any other discussion, commissioners, or questions? Or is it entertain a motion to approve with those conditions?
A motion to approve with the listed conditions, with the correct east side versus the west side, as noted in the packet.
A motion by Burkhart to approve with the staff recommended conditions, as well as the amendment of reference to the direction. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Hanson. Any further discussion? I would echo the comments that were made when we kind of first heard about the opportunity that this property might become utilized and developed, and then they, they talked through the architectural piece, I think it's going to be very, very unique, especially with the orientation of the container vertically, gives it a little sense of scale, and it'll be, it'll be unique. And just to double check, the applicant, is the applicant on the line? Move with them, unmute those two phone numbers, just in case.
They look to be unmuted.
Okay, all right. Very good, we got a motion, second on the floor, move into a vote, all in favor, signal by saying, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item four, Plan 200146, Lucky's on Second LLC. It's a request for an architectural review to perform facade improvements to the building at 126 Second Street North, parcel ID 3408139, excuse me, which falls within the downtown design overlay district. This property was sold within the last year, and the city council did approve a liquor license to be provided to the, to the owner to operate a bar at that address, and now they're looking to make some facade improvements. There are kind of two parts to this request, one that's not been necessarily purviewed by the commission here today, and that was facade improvement grant that the city has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to, to execute the review and approvals for those things. The city does have a representative, and our community development director, Kyle, is on the review committee, as well as Angel from the Heart of Wisconsin, and a few other folks that comprise that, that approval body. Kyle, I'll go to you to talk through the requests.
So again, we've got a vicinity map, it's on Second Street North, existing property. Here's some review, some findings of fact, which again are on the first page of the staff report, it's about a 2,100 square foot building, Zone B1, it does fall within the downtown design review district, and I will note that a tavern is permitted use. As the mayor said, the applicant is also pursuing facade grant funds. So really, the focus of the staff report has been on the downtown design review district standards, specifically within the zoning code, but again, there are some additional standards when the applicant does pursue the facade grant request, which is currently underway. The proposed improvements are to install three first-floor solid doors, each door does have, again, to my knowledge, has a small window, and they would be in existing openings. Number two, they're looking to install two second-floor windows in the full opening, so when we get to the photo, you'll notice that the windows do not now extend to the full opening, the full building opening. The design of those windows, however, is going to be a free side light design, so you've got casement crankouts on, on each end, and then you've got a stationary pane in the window. They are also looking to remove the entryway tile and replace with exterior carpet, and finally, remove the existing projecting sign on the building. Here's an existing photo of the building, so you can see where the, the stationary panes right now on the second-floor window do not extend to the full extent of the window opening, and again, the request is to do that. Furthermore, the request is to install doors that similarly resemble the existing doors there on the, on the main entrance to the facility with a very small window. Here's a historic photo of the building, which show that the windows did extend to the full extent on the second floor, and the door previously did have some glass at one time. I do want to, I do want to let the commission know, again, it's the, it's the intent of the downtown design review district to really preserve that historic integrity that exists, to allow for proper review, so that everyone downtown is able to enjoy, you know, that historic relevance and significance of downtown, you know, it's, you know, furthermore, we're not looking, again, to discourage any sort of development, and there, you know, there's some flexibility certainly within the guidelines, but again, keep that in mind when making, when making your recommendation here. So it's my thought, again, when, when reviewing the guidelines that are outlined in the staff report, that the solid doors do not provide, or do not meet many of the criteria within the design guidelines. I feel as though they don't create an inviting aesthetic feel to the building, like many other buildings do in downtown, rather they do just the opposite, very similar to the door, what the doors are doing now on the facility. So I would recommend that those actually be a different design, something with a lot more glass, that matches very similar doors on other storefronts in downtown. Furthermore, with regards to the windows, I don't think a casement window is historically accurate, I think typically you would have either had a stationary window as shown in the historic photo, or you would have had a, you know, either two side, side-by-side double-hung or single-hung windows, or possibly, you know, a combination of a stationary window and/or a single-hung or double-hung window next to it, or on either side of it. And again, I would recommend that a, a more historically accurate design be submitted for the second-floor windows as well. And there's further details, of course, in that regard outlined in the staff report. With regards to the, the 50% requirement transparency, again, I don't think that would be met if the proposed design was approved today. I think if, because the first-floor storefront window is at a hip height, that inserting some glass wherever we can within the storefront will assist in meeting that 50% transparency requirement, and I think it will do a lot aesthetically to the building, and again, that's why I would recommend a different design. Here are some examples of other buildings downtown that do have full glass with regards to the doors, some of them do have very similar hip-height windows and don't have floor-to-ceiling glass for the storefront, some of them do, but I feel as though, again, the, the proposed request does not match many of the design elements seen on similar buildings within the vicinity. With that being said, again, I've, I've outlined a few recommendations, you'll see on the screen and within the staff report, I can walk through them if you'd like.
We could see everybody. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you want to walk through the recommendations, then we'll have the applicant chime in, we'll go to commissioners with questions, as we release the information you presented, then we'll go to the applicant.
So again, just reading verbatim here, "A more historically accurate window shall be installed such as a single or double-hung design, or a hybrid three-light design with a stationary center window to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. A full-glass commercial storefront doors on the first floor shall be installed, with the exception that the first-floor door leading to the basement shall be permitted to match the original submitted design. Updated renderings of the doors shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. All window and door framing on new units shall match in color for the doors and the windows, an anodized aluminum frame shall be permitted. Removal of the projecting sign, it should not be time, it should be signed, shall be permitted." That would be a correction to number four. Number five, replacing entryway tile with exterior carpet shall be approved with a neutral carpet color matching the building exterior colors. And finally, number six, minor modifications to the facade improvement can be approved by the Community Development Department.
Thank you. Now, commissioners, are there any questions or comments about the staff review and recommendation for the request?
Well, I had one question about the exterior carpet. That's the answer, Wayne. How long do they stand up?
Question was related to longevity, Dan, about how it's going to stand up, like the interior, interior/outdoor, indoor/outdoor carpet, so that was another question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think from, you know, from a, from a historic standpoint, technically the carpet and the previous tile probably wouldn't be considered a building element, especially that plays in the historic significance of the building, and therefore, you know, it likely doesn't change the historical relevance either. It's very easy to be replaced, I think the one thing that I did note is that access and, you know, ADA standards would need to be met, so if it does get in disrepair, the applicant would need to, you know, maintain access to the facility and fire code and so forth. I think, I think the bigger question is whether or not the facade grant, and again, a separate review body would fund something that may not be a part of the historical significance of the building.
Well, I think your review, as I've heard it, with the changes, would be good.
Thanks, Dan. And other commissioners have any questions before I go to the applicant? Okay, I see Lee on the line, Lee, you've, I think we got you unmuted, so.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Kyle, Kyle, can you put up the, the drawing that we sent you, that, that which should look, should it look like after our improvements? Because I guess that's the, the thing of it is, and I think it was funny that you showed Rocks that the only other bar that had a glass entry to it, but that wasn't their, really their entry, that was a shared entry to another part, Rocks' main entry. On the other side is a full steel door, like what, kind of like what I would want to put in. If I can point out that there's no other bars except Bee's that has full glass like that, I'm more worried about a security problem with, with a steel door with a small window like what we have at Venus. As I pointed out to Kyle, you know, not only do we have probably $12,000 worth of product that people would like to have, but we have a cash business, and there's a lot of cash that's in around the bar itself on the weekend and stuff like that, we don't make nightly deposits, like a lot of businesses and stuff like this. The steel door that I'd like to put in would be more like, more secure than a full-glass window, like what Bee's has, or like the Flatiron Building. We have, it's actually a tavern that's, it needs more durable, I mean, I know that the one that we have a full glass, well, it was a full glass one at Door 212, which I own too, that that's been kicked out, you can ask, you can ask the mayor that he had actually one of his doors kicked out. When you start replacing glass doors, it's pretty expensive, and you can ask Zach how much it cost him, so that's why I'm not, I wouldn't put a, a, a glass door in. Do you actually have the picture of the bar that we drew for you? These are the windows, which makes sense, the upstairs window, we're looking to, to put a, a meeting room up there, which will overlook, overlook the river, when, when the weather conditions are good, we'll be able to crank open the windows and actually look at the river, hear the, hear the river, feel the breeze run through the building and stuff like this. In the winter, when we don't, we'll take the screens off, and this kind of window will be a maximum view of the river, instead of if you would put casement windows, slides up and down, you can see that that would take a lot of the view out of it. We're looking for a view out of the top room. We're looking for a view out of the top room, a meeting room that we're trying to put in there. That's why we went with these kinda windows, a maximum view and airflow. These are the doors that we're gonna put in, but there's not, there's not that, the checker is. You can see that you can see in them at night, but it's still, no one can, no one can kick, kick through the door or, or the window and gain entry. That's why we choose, chose these door. We have this door at Venus, and it's a very good door. It's very durable and very secure to the building. Do you have the, actually the picture that we drew?
I do not have that. I don't know.
Well, I guess that, that would really be the picture that you guys need to see and how the vision is. With, with, with the doors in there, it, it would be a good, good view, and that's the picture that should have been, should have been had, so. You can see that we, we wanna do something with the building. I know that I invested all my, a lot of money into it to revitalize. I know that there's, you know, there, there is one, there is the other side of the tattoo shop that sits empty. I know that the, the city has had that building that's sent empty for five or six years now. I know that the body shop is closed, probably not to be opened again. You know, that's, that's three buildings on my block that are sent idle. I'm trying to, trying to go forward and, and, and revitalize downtown, but it'd really be nice if it was approved with my things, that you can actually show people that the city of Wisconsin Rapids is, is very proactive in doing. I've walked through the building with Zach already, and he can seize my vision. If I could get a little help from the city, I'd really appreciate it. If we don't get, if we don't get this grant, I know that the doors are not gonna be changed, and we'll probably put the casement windows in there anyways. The, the windows that we've probably, our, our wanna will probably be put in anyways. Whether or not the upstairs will be finished or not, we don't know, but I know that the upstairs windows, a full length window needs to be put back in there, and that's what we're trying to do. Put back the windows that should be there.
Kyle, did you have something you wanted to pull up?
I was, uh, Lee, what, did you email that recently, or?
Yeah, I know that we sent that. I know that Angel's sitting on it too. Is Angel there too?
She's on the call. Um, Angel, you should be unmuted if you, um, know what Lee's referring to. If you happen to have a copy of that file, we can probably pull it up here. Lee, you say it's a photo, or it's like a, a sketch?
No, it was actually a, a sketch over, over that it showed actually what the big windows upstairs would look like and the, the two doors, the three doors on the bottom would look like. It was a, a, a rough sketch. It would improve the look of the, look of the building altogether. And that's what we're trying to do is revitalizing downtown. And this is one of the first steps to, to do this with.
Lee, I, I personally have not seen that sketch.
Well, I wish that, I know that we sent it over in the file that's, we sent all the file numbers that we had, 'cause that kinda makes it the lucky sign that sits between the two windows. I think the sign that's over, over, overlooking, that's hanging over the sidewalk, looks not nice. A flat lucky sign against the billing is all that needed. We're trying to make the downtown a destination, one of, one of the, the, the six bars that you come down and visit when you come down to Rapids. And that's what we're trying to do. What, what we did to a door, we're trying to do downtown. So I'm just trying to expand people coming downtown. And this is one little part of it. That's all it is. I wish that, I wish, can you send her that? I can't believe that we can't, 'cause I know that we sent it, so that was all part of, here, let me see if I can find it here. Can we send that to somebody?
She wants to mail it. Angel, if you wanna mail that, um, we can also unmute you here.
Hey Kyle, we're gonna send this to you quick. I don't know, look in your email here.
Great. I think Angel's now unmuted too. So if you wanna, yeah, fire it over to us, we should be able to pull it up.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, I thought previously I had emailed the rendering over. It was just a, uh, one of the photos that, uh, you guys already have, but it had some additional, um, doors and photo samples, kind of cropped it and paste over the top of it. So if you did not get that, I apologize. Uh, Lee, it sounds like you may have it already up in front of you. Otherwise, I will go ahead and send that over, 'cause I know I do have that in my file.
Kyle should have it in his email right now.
And I think, uh, give me about a minute here to get it up, and if, if the commission wants to.
Yeah, we go back to commissioners, uh, for discussion. Commissioners, anything you'd like to discuss on this request or questions? Oh, I think they might be muted. I see, it looks like Shane's trying to say something. There we go. Fire away.
Okay, yeah, it locked us in. We couldn't even unmute ourselves here, so I don't know if we can change that for a future meeting to at least allow some people to unmute. So I totally understand, uh, the security part, but is maybe there's some kinda compromise that will allow a more secure door on the bottom, but yet more glass in the upper portion.
Well, I know that if you were to see this, if you would want to Venus and see that the whole six inches on the one side is huge, because what I like is natural light, and that's why we put the windows in the, we, we added windows at Venus. Over the time that we've had is natural, natural light, natural ventilation is huge to me, 'cause it's more economical and it's just more, we, we need to work with the seasons more. And I guess that's why we're really working on the upstairs, that we can have the airflow through the upstairs, because everything was sealed up there. So we can still talk about what the doors are and stuff like that, okay? That's the windows of this, that's the doors. They'll look better than that, but that's kinda like the doors that are gonna be on there, and like the casement windows are gonna be the full length there. But I don't think the crankout windows, I think there's gonna be three parts of it, not two parts of it. There's gonna be a middle, instead of a, there's gonna be a middle solid and the crankouts are smaller.
Or the middle of the stationary leaves out.
Right, right. So we have, so in the winter, when it's all the way pulled in with the screens off, there's gonna be a full, what is it, six by six glass window that you can kinda see out with only like three partitions running up and down, so. And I guess, you know, Zach has personally been up, up to the upstairs. We've, you've seen the vision that we'd like to have on it, and it makes sense if we could bring people downtown. And that's all we're trying to do is revitalize, this is part of revitalizing downtown.
Yeah.
So, and that's what we need to be more progressive at. I mean, we need, I have another person that's looking on, on the other side of the, the, the tattoo place, that he's interested in doing something too, and that's what we need to do is put our foot forward and, you know, all I'm looking for is nine thousand, ten thousand out of the, out of this grant money. I mean, the doors are security.
So for the purposes of the commission review, um, our purview today is architectural review, which obviously this is centered around. Um, if we wanna maybe take it in two parts, commissioners, we've got the list of recommendations from staff, but for discussion purposes, would it be beneficial if we were to break up the windows versus the doors in conversation? For, for dealing with this?
I'll say, I have no issues with, with the windows. I think that, you know, what Lee is, you know, saying, that, where I think we're saying the same thing of what we're requesting and what he's offering to do. You know, the doors, I, I really do understand the, the nature of security and the, you know, the compromise of getting natural light and stuff in there. I personally look at it as it's an improvement over the doors that are there now, so I think we're getting closer to it.
Other thoughts, commissioners, on the, um, I guess, are there any other concerns on the windows before we maybe parse that one out for discussion purposes? There's a chat request. It looks like Kyle's coming in, or if that's somebody that's muted, or?
I don't have any real problem with the windows up in the upper story, nor do I have with the doors. I think these, the doors in this last sketch are very nice and clean.
Other thoughts, commissioners?
I would just offer, uh, while we're going through this, um, Lee had referenced some personal experiences I've had with glass stores now. And Lee and I can maybe, uh, jovially discuss this, uh, off, off on the side, but I, I think, I think the building with the three of those same doors makes it look very institutional. Um, and I understand the security concerns, but I would say that Jennings, the wine bar, which, between the inventory that they carry and the, and the supplies, both on the wine bar side and the consignment stuff, I think, you know, having a commercial full glass door on that front, in my opinion, is warranted. I don't know which, which we would have to settle with. I completely sympathize with the security concerns. I would just argue that the banks have secure, have the full glass doors, and it's just, it's just consistent. B's, yeah, and I'll reference B's. I think I rocks two has a full, I know on the one side entrance they have, and if I'm not mistaken, they've got one, um, on the other, on their main entrance, but I, and I don't necessarily need to argue about this, but I do think it's thinking about that sixty year look or forty year look ahead that the tone and style that we're agreeing to today is not gonna be changed for the course of the next occupant or probably the subsequent occupants twenty, thirty years from now. So that would be just what I would encourage to think about is, is the point that Shane raised about compromise. I don't, I, I don't know what the glass vendors have in terms of options. I just, I like the commercial glass doors a lot better, but I do agree with Lee. This improvement will revitalize and add some energy to that, that block and that street that's much needed right now.
But again, as you're comparing a tavern to, to, to compare it to a restaurant, though.
Yeah.
And I guess, you know, Aaron's is good. He's, he's truly a big part of the downtown that we're banking on going forward and stuff. Jennings is truly, uh, 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 we're gonna start our night out there, but again, is it's Whiskies, Lucky's, you know, Holly Rocks, you know, Door Two Twelve in Venus is where you're gonna finish your nights. I hate to say this, you're gonna start at B's, have a couple drinks, go to Jennings and Aaron for something to eat. Jennings and, and, and Aaron's is not a late night bar. You're gonna end up at a late night bar, and that's the problem. You know, that's why B's is closed at ten o'clock. You know, that he doesn't want the problems that we deal with. We, he doesn't wanna deal with the safe rides. He doesn't wanna deal with stuff like this. It's, it's a starting bar, and these are end of the night bars where we're gonna end up with the problem children. And I guess that's the, the concern that I have. But again, is this way we have three doors that all look alike. Do we need a half glass door that goes upstairs, which is the, the total right one goes upstairs? The, the middle one goes downstairs, that we don't need a, a, a half glass door to look down a stairs. Again, is, and that's the whole problem. Do you want three doors that look alike that'll match? Or do you want one glass door that goes into the bar and then two solid doors that go down in the basement and go upstairs? I guess I want more direction. I think these three doors will fit and look good together. But if you want two solid doors going downstairs and going upstairs, I don't have a problem with that. And if you want a half glass door going into entry into the tavern part, I'm not gonna have a problem with that. Just that these doors will look fit together and look together nicely. I'm really flexible with the, if you guys are okay with two, two steel doors on the, on the second and third one and a half, you know, half window in, in the bar one, I don't have a problem with that.
So if there was a half glass on the left tavern, upper, upper half, and then a half on the far right, and then a solid steel in the middle, um, you don't have any real need for natural light. That basement's in the short term is not gonna be public, uh, utilized in the public, is that right?
Well, I like the natural light going downstairs, but I, I don't like the view. That's the problem. That's a view that you don't wanna look in and see. Just like the stairs, the little windows gives you a glimpse. It gives you the natural light that I believe in, but it doesn't really have, give you the full length, full length, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna look, and you're gonna just briefly. It's not like you're actually gonna look up. It gives you the natural light, but it doesn't give you the view.
Sure.
And that's, I don't think we need a view of the upstairs. I don't think we need a view of the downstairs. So do you want two doors like this on the, the middle and right, and you wanna have, would that look? 'Cause I don't, I'm not sure how that'll look. The aesthetics of these three doors will look the same. I guess that's what I was going for.
Sure, makes sense. I guess, commissioners, do you have any thoughts about the configuration? Or, uh, or I guess alternative that I threw on the table? Or Kyle?
Go ahead.
So just, just a, a point of clarity, um, would, would the activities of Lucky be similar to the activities of Venus?
No, it's gonna be more like Door Two Twelve.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not zone like that. It's not gonna be, it's not, no, it's not a gentleman's club. This is the branch what, what, what we decided when we were successful. I was, we were very successful at Door. I hate to say this, I'm starting another, another, I'm, another partner like Alicia down here, which I think we're gonna be successful in. I think starting young people that, that need a break, I think this, on, this, this other partner that I'm partnering up with, I think she'll be su, very successful running this, and she sees the same vision that I have. Me and Alicia, you know, share the same vision, you know, giving back to the community. I hate to say this. I don't think that anybody there is aware of what Venus does for the community, but you can certainly see what Door Two Twelve does to the community.
And if you're asking me, just for clarification on the use, um, since we probably.
Right, right.
Clarification upfront.
Right, it'll be, it'll be a sister club of Door Two Twelve.
Great. Sue, did I hear you try, uh, chiming in as well?
Yes, I feel strong that the three doors should match. That's what Lee is saying. Now, I also agree that I would like it to be glass, or at least half glass.
And Lee, do you sense that that would be a viable option, or I guess other commissioners, how do you feel about that?
Well, I know the doors look terrible now, and I'm all for more, more glass. I'm, you know, I'm not, if that's, if that's what you guys want is a half glass door on top, that's, that's what we're gonna have. I mean, I don't know if the costs are probably a little more, and, you know, it'll be adjusted up or whatever, like this. If you guys want, if you truly are truly that strong about a half glass door, you're gonna get a half glass door.
Joe or Kyle, you both.
I was just gonna mention for the, you know, for the staircases going both up and down, I, I really don't know. Street side, on a abundance of glass in the two right most doors, again, because to look up a staircase or to look down a staircase, I don't know, you know, if that's particular curb appeal.
Right, and that's what, that's all my point was. So do we have two doors, the middle one and the, the far right one that looks like this, and a half glass? I mean, I, it, it'd be really nice to have three doors that look alike, and that's what. And a half glass? I mean, I, it, it'd be really nice to have three doors that look alike, and that's what Sue was saying. But, and that's the whole, this is the give and take that we talk about all the time. I mean, you guys decide what you want. I, to me, I don't think an upstairs going upstairs or or downstairs is, is appealing. That's
Over, over in the, the building where B's is, the, the door right next to, to B's is a door that goes right into a stair going upstairs and it is, it is beneficial to have more glass because as you're coming out, you can see if somebody's at the door and so you're not just gonna like blindly open, cause these doors are opening out into it, so you could hit somebody.
Yeah, I can understand that part of it being on a non traffic, but again, is these, these doors are set in anyways, because when you open it up, the total door does not go into, it's kind of deceiving the way that these are if you've ever been downtown, that when you open the door up completely, it goes to the the, the very edge of the building. These doors are set in. They don't come out to the curb. They don't come out to the, the sidewalk at all. So when we actually, we can actually pin them open and it doesn't go into the sidewalk. These are set back. I don't know if you can tell by this picture or not, but they're actually set in. And I understand the whole going in traffic in and out, but again, is the upstairs is not gonna see traffic at night and the downstairs is not gonna see traffic at night. So the only door that's really gonna be used at night is gonna be the bar one. And that opens up, but doesn't open up to the sidewalk.
And I think, like you said, Lee, they are recessed. I've been, that's where that vestibule is kind of showing by having having those, if they were, if they were flush with the front of the building, I think you'd have more of an aesthetic issue by looking at a staircase up or down. Being recessed, you've got sort of a, a little bit of, um, maybe less likelihood of seeing the staircase from the exterior than if you would if they were flush. You know, talking about the half glass idea or even just that window pane that's in the proposed doors. Kyle, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, clarify and reiterate that, you know, the, I, I strongly urge the commission to take the standards of review into consideration. You know, we're, we're enforcing zoning code here. There, the standards have been provided. Um, certainly there's a level of subjectivity to those standards on, you know, whether or not we felt as though it would provide a visual appeal or having some sort of compromise, uh, with a half door, but I, I also wanna note that, you know, there, there's a potential that approving the doors could certainly set precedent and, you know, you would find similar scenarios with future requests, you know, citing this example perhaps for the design of the windows, you know, casements or uh, the, the design of the doors. And so, you know, I think we need to be careful and, and kind of tread lightly in that respect. Um, however, if, if there's a way, you know, you can maybe be in the middle with regards to offering more glass than what's currently there, um, I think that would be appropriate. But again, I would, I would stick to the recommendations in the staff report and previously identified.
Thank you. Other thoughts commissioners? Further requests? So we understand, I don't have my packet pulled up, so if you can just guide me of what sort of action we'd be looking to take here, you throw that up on the screen. It's a request for architectural review, facade improvements, um, and it's pertaining to windows and doors. Are there other, it looks like there's a sign removal, all the entryway with the red carpet? Right, are those the?
Those are, so those are the, the four improvements, basically, the, the windows, the doors, the tile and the removal of the sign.
Okay, commissioners or applicant, Lee, did you have anything further?
No, I guess, I, I guess, perfect. I hate to say this. I know that the tile that's there and I know that you go there and I go that we went to carpeting and I know that's gonna be replaced more often, but again, is it's not as slippery. The tile, when it gets any kind of moisture on it, any kind of ice on it, any kind of snow on it, is very slippery. And that's why we decided to go with a with a more like a carpet. I know it's gonna have to be replaced more, but we want something that's non-slip, especially in the winter, winter months when everybody's coming in and out, if it gets a little wet or nothing. I, everybody's been at rocks and, and walking up the, all the slippery tile is very slippery when it gets wet and a little snow or a little icy. So if you guys can approve the windows and that, and just if you guys wanna wait on the doors, we can wait on the doors. I mean, what's there will work for us. I know that the windows need to be, they're just terrible and they're rotted out that and they, the, the windows need to be replaced and that's a very need now to do. And I know that the, the, the tile in front needs to be fixed. That's, that's a need to do right now before we even open the tile in the front. So I know that we're just waiting for everything to be lifted before we're open, we're ready up and go. The soft often opening should have been the last weekend of March. We're set to go. Everything's set. Uh, we're waiting for his product and a go from the governor. You know, I thought, ev- all, I thought this was approved a long time ago with Angel. And I know there was miscommunication on my end, so decide what you guys wanna approve and what we wanna do and that's, we, we're, we're flexible. If you guys are good with the, with the windows up on top, that's, that's huge for me. That's a win for me, I think. But you guys decide what you want for the doors. I just don't think upstairs going upstairs is, is good because these stairs do need a little work on. They're not, if, if we have a half window there, I'm gonna have to spend some more money to get the upstairs going and, and going too, which is something that I didn't plan on doing right away, but decide what you want with the doors and we'll do it. But it can't be a full glass door. I won't put a full glass door in there.
Sure. So the recommendation for the, for the non tavern doors though, is what was submitted?
No, I think it's being consistent. We're gonna do, well, we don't have a motion on the floor, but it's to be consistent across all three doors. So, so and not, and not fully commercial glass, the compromise that was discussed was a half glass, upper glass door for all the doors. There was concurrence and I, I didn't hear any concern on the carpet. Any concern on that commissioners?
No, I think the carpet's a great idea. I actually slipped and fell up inside of my office door, which is right next to B's tap house, so that's a real thing.
I think, and Lee, I think we're ready to give you the green light today. I, I don't think there's any deal breakers on any of this. It's just kind of maybe talking through that, that door piece. And if you're comfortable with what we discuss, I'd entertain a motion or I'd even make one myself, uh, to continue moving this, uh, renovation and project forward. I think it's gonna be a great great step in the direction, great direction here. Commissioners?
So where are we staying on the doors? Are we taking the doors out or are we?
I recommend we include them and do, uh, three half glass doors. Like, it's almost like the far right door that's there today. I would say it's more than, um, I believe it was more than a half glass. Oh, the middle one is the
That was, that was a, I know that we replaced this door because the other door was completely rotted. This was an, on the far right, there was a half glass door there, but it was completely rotted up. This is another, this was just a good used door that we, somebody had that we threw in there.
Picture of Manny reflection in a glass door.
Right, that was, that was, yep, that was the other one. We just replaced this one a little while ago because the other one was absolutely trying to fall apart at the time. So that's why we just put another used door in there.
This, this view of the building puts a different light on it. Two doors that are together and one separate. Cause there is a wall between them.
Right.
So one on the far right could be anything.
Well, would you like to have it, you know, the, the side? Again, as I'm all, I'm all for natural light, especially in the winter or, or anytime that you go in and clean or whatever like this, that's why I was all for the whole half glass. And I know that the, 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 the windows, the doors that we were put in was just like the door that we put at Venus. You can't believe how much light comes in, in there, even with the, with the, you can put a decorational glass stuff on top of it and it still lets all the all the light in and truly the natural lighting is truly something that I just believe in. So it's up to you guys. What you guys wanna put in for doors, I'll put in, if you guys want two half glass doors, you know, or, or what you guys want. If you guys want a, a full glass, decide what you guys want. That's what we'll put in. As long as it's only a half glass on the bar one, I mean, it's up to you guys what you wanna put in.
Well, looking at this picture, like Dave just said, it is totally different with the two doors, when the wall there and then the third door. So if the first, the two doors are the same and the third door can be yes, right.
So is there a recommendation, commissioners? On the motion?
An motion to approve with the two half doors and then the other, the third door on the right can either be a half or the, the vertical transom as presented. Uh, and then as we had discussed earlier, the window replacement is acceptable. And the carpeting.
And remove of the sign. We got a motion by Burkhardt. Is that clear to everyone? I guess I'll go for a second person and then we'll repeat the motion.
Second.
Second by Wesley. Motion is to, uh, replace the upper windows as requested by the, uh, requester. Removing the sign, uh, putting in, uh, commercially indoor outdoor carpet or outdoor carpet, I should say, the entry vestibule area and, uh, up to three half glass doors uh, with the far right one being flexible interchangeable with, uh, vertical, uh, transom. Lee, does that sit well with you?
That works for me. If it works for you guys, it works for me.
Awesome. Um, any other discussion commissioners? And move into a vote. So all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Well, Lee, aside from a pandemic, uh, you said you were hoping to open in March, um, when will you have, or when, when do your contractors expect to have these improvements?
I, I don't know. We were supposed to all have this, all, everything done by April first. But again, is now that we don't know would, w- we don't, this pandemic is truly throwing shockwaves to everybody because everybody lost all their 401K and now they're, you know, they were, they're, everybody's nervous. But again, is what I heard today was this is supposed to peak and get, get, get better and all of a sudden we're gonna have another wave go through in October.
Well, we're gonna have an election tomorrow and it looks like that's gonna happen now as
Well, it is gonna happen now, right? The election is gonna happen or not gonna happen now?
It is going to happen, is
You got it. Well,
this roller coaster we're all living on, right?
I mean,
So just to clarify, Lee, the next step would be chamber, um, you know, the, the approval for the facade grant. And, um, so Angel and Kyle wanna just restate that, um, and where does, I guess Angel or Kyle will be in touch with you, Lee, about the next steps in that process.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you'll get a summary email from me, Lee, uh, likely tomorrow.
You got it. Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lee. Um, item number five, Plan One Nine Zero Nine Three Eight, Community Development. Uh, discussion on the new sign ordinance, chapter forty-six of the, of the Community Development Director's Review. And as I understand, uh, and I guess I'm just to clarify, there was a request by an older person to postpone our, our meeting and I clarified some of those things for your benefit, um, Kyle shared that with you, but really the intent for five and six were to put them back on our radar, uh, not to seek, um, or, or inhibit public participation. I know we had an open house and a number of other outreach items on this with extensive discussion here at the commission, but uh, the council did refer the sign code back to us, um, for the, at the start of our new community development director pile here. Um, so I just wanna make that clear that we're not seeking any direction or action on this or the next item, I believe, today. So Kyle, do you wanna take, uh,
So it's been a long time with regards to the sign code. I hope all the dates are accurate on the screen here. Um, with regards to, you know, when it began, our first draft provided the open house uh, postponement and now, uh, some discussion and, and hopefully again, depending upon the crisis we face, uh, adoption by Mayor June. It would have been great to get this adopted earlier because I think we're now going to see a lot of signs, uh, start making their way on people's lawns and on businesses. Whether it's the banners that you see on the commercial, um, corridors or you know, the event signs, the metal event signs you see around the community. Nonetheless, um, I did review, uh, the sign code thoroughly. I did, uh, in the memo, uh, outline some recommendations. Most of them are very small tweaks. Uh, there are about two or three of them that I do wanna call out and one of them, uh, that I did not include, uh, but came up afterwards. Uh, as I re- reviewed it earlier today. The one that I do wanna mention though, uh, is in regards to the awning. I think, uh, if somebody does pursue an awning, I think it was the intent, the way it was written. This is on page eighty-three of ninety-nine of the packet. Uh, number four down under awning signs. Basically that, um, we would permit a sign to be placed on the front of an awning and or the awning balance, which is the portion of pa- fabric that hangs down, but we would limit that to fifty percent. I again wanna hopefully get some clarification that that was the intent. The other thing, uh, that I wanna point out that was in the memo, uh, continuing down page eighty-three was number nine, where you see the, the red outline with the strike through. I would recommend removing that. I don't think we need to get, uh, determining whether or not, um, somebody else's sign on another property is unreasonably obstructing another person's sign. I think, um, you know, we would leave that up to, um, those private en- entities, uh, to determine and or pursue legal means. Uh, if necessary, I think if they came to the city and requiring that determination, um, it would be very hard for us to do. And again, I, Sue, the city attorney's on the line, perhaps she could speak to that. Uh, but initially, right now, I, I would recommend removing that. And then the other thing that's not mentioned, um, is on page ninety-three and ninety-four of the packet of sign code, which is attached to this memo. Under sign permits, uh, signs not requiring permits. Uh, we require single family zone parcels to have signage without a permit up to twelve square feet. Uh, to me, that seems quite large. You're thinking of, uh, you know, a three foot by four foot, uh, size sign that's, you know, uh, half of a sheet of plywood essentially in your front yard, whether that's for home occupation or for rent sign, things along those lines. To me, it seems like it's a little bit excessive and a little large, especially with regards to being able to double that, uh, if double sided. And then the other thing is, you know, we're still regulating those signs, even though they may not require a permit. And if somebody does have a home occupation, uh, I think requiring a sign permit is certainly one way that we can, you know, keep track of those home occupations. It's obviously we're, you know, we're going to have to do some review if, uh, if you get a complaint on the sign, we're gonna have to go out there and inspect it. So I, you know, I may be in favor of requiring, um, residential signs to be permitted, uh, in certain circumstances. Certainly, I don't think, uh, we need to permit uh, for sale signs, a realtor sign. A lot of those signs are exempt under statute anyways. You know, maybe even for rent signs, we don't need to, uh, need to regulate, but I think, uh, you know, a permanent residential sign that's there and meant to be there, uh, we may wanna consider requiring the permit and or reducing the size of that sign. And again, uh, today I'm just looking for some feedback and input in regards to the memo and the last item discussed.
I agree with Kyle's, uh, in- intent there. I think we had this discussion before with Civitec of the wording is very difficult to to say which signs are regulated and not regulated with the, the free speech. Is what I recall, but that has been quite some time now.
Any other comments, commissioners? We're gonna do what Kyle presented here. Everybody unmuted.
So Kyle, the size, size that you mentioned to half sheet plywood, what would your recommendation be for size?
I would, I would think maybe I would, I would think maybe cutting that in half, so instead of twelve square feet, doing six square feet.
Okay.
Or even four, anywhere, anywhere between four and six, I would recommend. You know, again, the the thought is if. If you have one or multiple individuals with that twelve square foot or twenty-four square foot double sided sign. You know, along a street corner in a residential area, what does that do to the residential character of the neighborhood, the aesthetics, and I just think, you know. It's gonna be a significance, of large significance between that twelve square foot sign versus, you know, in comparison to a four square foot sign.
Correct, okay.
Other, um, commissioners, other questions or comments? And we did receive, um, comment, Kyle, from the public. If I'm not mistaken, from JR, I see JR's on the call, but Kyle, did you have anything to read, play the record on this, and we're not taking any action today?
And JR, if you'd like to speak, uh, you are unmuted, so feel free to chime in if you'd like.
Thank you, Kyle. I just wanted to, um, ask that. Uh. I received the most, you know, current draft on this, the last one that I had was October first of two thousand and nineteen. And, and any, you know, proposed addendums to, um, uh, what you were just talking about a few moments ago. And I also wanted to say, you know, thank you for, yeah, given what's going on right now, um, uh, not. Taking any action on it at this time, which hopefully will allow for additional input, you know, from the business owners in the community.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners or Kyle?
No, I, you know, I would always, uh. You know, ask that if you guys do have comments or input beyond today's meeting, feel free to reach out via email. Or phone call, and I'd be happy to discuss things with you further with regards to the sign code or, or anything on the the agenda or upcoming agendas.
Great, so encourage folks to reach out to Kyle directly, his contact information's on the city's website, if there are specific concerns or questions that that folks would like to raise. Move on to item number six, if there's nothing else from anyone. Well, Community Development, uh, Plan two zero zero one by five, discussion on amending the zoning ordinance, chapter eleven of the municipal code to define and incorporate a mobile lending use within zoning districts.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, for discussion only, there'll be no action, um, I don't think, uh. From, from, from you was needed or any action at the council level this month, but it's something that I think, uh, is increasing in popularity. And, you know, we're entering the food truck season, season essentially right now, so I, you know, I think having something on the books sooner rather than later would be appropriate. I do know also another ordinance is being drafted in regards to permitting. But with that being the case, we need to identify the use in the zoning code, and we also need to define the use in the zoning code from an enforcement standpoint. And and really, you know, I think, uh. I'm looking to get your feedback on where do you want them, you know, initially, you can think about them being in commercial areas or. Or parked in a commercial parking lot, uh, that's typically open, you know, seven to to ten perhaps. Uh, but I will say there are some that, uh, some food trucks and vendors that do. Wanna pursue, uh, you know, entering into residential districts or mixed use areas, uh, you know, the example I would bring up is somebody parking maybe on a cul-de-sac. And offering, uh, something, uh, within a residential neighborhood. So how do we wanna regulate those? Uh, what are your thoughts on that? Should we, should we just keep them in commercial and mixed use districts? Uh, do we wanna allow them, uh, on public rights of way in residential streets? Uh, because we do have the opportunity within the zoning code. To identify those in the, uh, the three sections referenced in my memo.
Commissioners, any, um. Any discussion from anyone? I guess hearing no discussion, um, this item will appear on a future meeting again as well. Um, I'd expect there might be some other, uh, other maniac involvement here, some other persons have gotten some. Concerns or questions from their constituents about these in this occurring residential areas and that type of thing, so, um. Continue to heed that public input, um, to make sure our mobile lending ordinance is reflective of, of our. Own aspirations maybe as well as, uh, balancing that nuisance or public health, safety, welfare. Expectation or obligation that we all try to hold. So with that, unless there's anything anyone has to say, um, I'd entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Burkhart, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Wesley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say adjourned, thank you all for being with us remotely, so we can tackle a couple of these pieces of business, and I encourage you all to be well, and. Remind your friends and family members to be safe, that they're gonna be voting in person tomorrow, as it appears that that, uh, being, that's going to occur, and. I know our poll workers are getting some training next door, I heard them in and out, but they, we've got some face shields for them, and we're gonna do what we can to keep everyone. Uh, help, to keep everyone healthy and safe tomorrow at the election, so be well.